Come to order, please. Roll call if you press your present button, please, and confirm. Yeah, dear. Record the roll. We got one missing?
Yeah, we got it.
Pardon me?
We got it.
All right. Record the roll. Announcement staff?
Mr. Chairman, just have two short announcements. First of all, we've had a request for a non-agenda item involving the Chardonnay Section 4. What happened was between the time that the Planning Commission approved this and they went to see our folks in the basement regarding a road name, they have concluded that road name would no longer work for their purposes, so we thought this was a minor enough item to try to move along and let them get on their way.
Twenty-one.
And I think Mike Madison would like to make a quick announcement regarding the Grassland Small Area Study.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, as you all know, the Planning Commission has thus far adopted special area plans for the College Grove Village and the Leapers Fork Village, and as I believe Mr. Horn announced recently, we're about to embark on the special area plan process for the Grassland Village. One of the first steps in that process is going to be assembling a Citizens Advisory Committee, like we've done for the other plans. So to that end, we have sent out a number of direct mailings to people in the area and gotten the word out other ways as well to solicit some potential participation from area business owners, property owners, residents, and so forth. We've had good response so far, and I tell you this primarily to indicate that, just like we did with the Leapers Fork Plan, we'll be coming to you next month with a recommendation on a makeup of that Citizens Advisory Committee and ask you to take a look at that and endorse that.
Other announcements? Joe?
No, sir, that is all.
Thank you. Consideration the minutes of August 9, 2012. Any corrections? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Don, Susan, hit your confirm button again, see if it'll put it in. It did. Record the vote. It's clear. Thank you. The motion carries after that. Wow. Old business. Any old business, Joe?
No, sir.
Mike? Consideration the consent agenda. Those on the commission, if you want to pull any agenda item off the consent for separate consideration, please say so now, otherwise we'll take it as a whole. Anyone? I see none. We'll take it as a whole. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Begin with item three, addition to Legends Ridge, Section 2A, Lot 924, performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control, $65,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months. Item four, addition to Legends Ridge, Section 3, maintenance bond for roads drainage and erosion control, $8,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months. Item five, Chardonnay, Section 1, maintenance bond for roads drainage and erosion control, $30,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item six, Chardonnay, Section 3, maintenance bond for water, $8,500. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of one year. Item seven, Cherry Valley, maintenance bond for roads drainage and erosion control, $12,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item eight, Delta Springs, maintenance bond for roads drainage and erosion control, $125,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months. Item nine, Ends of the Cove, Section 1, maintenance bond for wastewater treatment disposal system, $74,639. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 10, Ends of the Cove, Section 1, maintenance bond for wastewater collection system, $80,861. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 11, Kings Chapel, Section 2C, performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control, $145,000. Recommendation, extended current amount for a period of six months. Item 12, Pet Vet, maintenance bond for landscaping, $3,300. Recommendation, this bond will be re-reviewed at the October 11, 2012 meeting. Item 13, Traders Post, performance bond for landscaping, $3,750. Recommendation, convert to maintenance amount of $1,500 for a period of six months. And dropping in to item 19 under final plat. Final plat review for Silverstream Farms, Section 6B, containing 16 lots and 8.63 acres located off Rocky Fork Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff recommends approval of this plat subject to the following stipulations. One, posting a performance bond in amount of $103,000 for roads drainage and erosion control. Two, the posting of performance bond for water improvements in the amount of $35,000 as specified by Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Three, posting of performance bond for sewer improvements in the amount of $15,000 as specified for Metro Nashville Water and Sewer Services. Four, the posting of performance bond for landscaping improvements in the amount of $54,300. Five, execution and recording of stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of consent?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval. Recommendation, staff?
Was there a second? I heard. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14, a public hearing. Amendment to the Williamson County Zoning Ordinance effective January 1, 2013 regarding the Hamlet and MGA Hamlet zoning districts. Those of you in the audience who wish to speak at this public hearing, our procedures are as follows. Staff will make a staff report presentation. At its conclusion, you'll be invited to come to the podium and make your comments. We would ask that when you do, if you'd give us your name and your home address, we would appreciate it. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On May 14, 2012, the Williamson County Board of Commissioners adopted a new zoning ordinance which will apply to properties in the unincorporated county beginning on January 1, 2013. The adoption of the new ordinance was previously recommended by the Planning Commission at its April 2012 meeting. During the public hearing held by the County Commission regarding the new ordinance, a number of individuals expressed a concern regarding a provision contained within the new ordinance which limits the size of individual commercial and industrial buildings within the Hamlet and MGA Hamlet, MGA H Hamlet zoning districts to 5,000 square feet. This provision was originally included in the new ordinance to help implement a comprehensive plan policy which emphasizes that development in and around Hamlet should be limited and that the scale of new development should be small and in keeping with the character of these existing rural communities. In response to the citizen concerns expressed at the public hearing, the Commission directed Planning Department staff to meet with affected citizens regarding this issue and, based on the feedback received, to reevaluate the building size requirement in these Hamlet and MGA Hamlet districts prior to the January 1, 2013 effective date of the new ordinance. In response to the direction given by the County Commission, staff held two public meetings, one on the east side of the county and one on the west, which were designed to obtain public input regarding the appropriate size for new buildings in the Hamlet and MGA Hamlet districts. These meetings were held on June 19 at Hillsborough Elementary and Middle School and on June 21 at Page Middle School. To help maximize citizen participation, a letter advertising these meetings was sent to each property owner within the Hamlets. Additionally, letters were sent to owners whose properties fall within a 300-foot boundary of the Hamlets since they too have a direct interest in how these Hamlet areas develop in the future. A staff report providing background information regarding this issue, summarizing the two public meetings held in June, and outlining future steps was distributed to the Planning Commission, County Commission, and Zoning Ordinance Update Steering Committee in July. As outlined in the staff report, feedback from the public meetings was mixed, with a large number of people, 38 percent of survey respondents, wanting to keep commercial and industrial buildings under 5,000 square feet, and a nearly equal number of people, 35 percent of survey respondents, wanting to allow buildings greater than 25,000 square feet. Based on that information, staff and the Zoning Ordinance Update Steering Committee, which was established by the County Commission to help guide and direct the drafting of the zoning ordinance, sought to craft an amendment to the Hamlet and MGA Hamlet zoning districts which strikes a balance between the divergent points of view expressed by the community while continuing to adhere to the policies and recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The amendment, which is attached, is based on a three-part approach. First, the amendment establishes a sliding scale whereby the maximum size of individual commercial and industrial buildings increases up to a maximum of 15,000 square feet as the size of the parcel increases. Secondly, a new section entitled "Potential Transition to Village District" has been added. This section acknowledges that changing conditions and/or an increase in demand for new development may warrant consideration by the county of a rezoning of an individual Hamlet or MGA Hamlet district to the village district. Additionally, this section provides guidance to the Planning Commission and County Commission based on measurable criteria in terms of when a rezoning may be appropriate. Thirdly, the purpose and intent sections of these districts have been modified to include language encouraging new development in Hamlets to be compatible with the character of existing buildings and to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan. Staff believes this proposed amendment strikes the proper balance between the divergent points of view expressed by the community while continuing to adhere to good planning principles and the policies and recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment has been unanimously recommended by the Zoning Ordinance Update Steering Committee. Staff also recommends approval of the proposed amendment and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption. Just one additional point, Mr. Chairman, and that is that you have in front of you a copy of some correspondence that has been received regarding this issue.
Thank you, Mike. We'll open, excuse me, we'll open floor for a public hearing at this time. If you wish to make a comment, you're invited to do so now. If you'd come to the podium, as I said earlier, and give us your name and home address, we would appreciate it. The floor is now open. Don't stampede now, folks.
Yes, sir.
My name's Rob Schaefer. I live at 1804 Pope's Chapel Road in Burwood. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to any changes to what you all wisely put in place initially. I'd like to refer to part of what Mike just read, the purpose and intent of the Hamlets. Hamlets are important to Williamson County in that they provide small but historical, historic focal points within the rural landscape. For this reason, the preservation of the historic character of the Hamlets is an important goal of the comprehensive plan. The intent of the district is to preserve, enhance, and enhance the unique character of these Hamlet areas through the standards and maintain the traditional form and use of the Hamlet. New development within the Hamlet should respect the existing pattern and scale of development and should be compatible with existing buildings. That's not all of it, but that's off the website. I think that that's what the Hamlet, in my interpretation, was made, was established to do. I grew up in middle Tennessee. I had to leave when I was 11 because my parents left and I had to go with them. Went to Missouri. After college, my business life took me to St. Louis, Springfield, Illinois, Dallas, Baltimore, New York, Providence, and luckily in 1994, my company moved me back to middle Tennessee. I knew I would never leave. We made a be, while my business was in Nashville, we made a beeline for Williamson County. It is truly a unique place. In all the places that I've lived, and I've lived in some nice, nice places, there is nothing, there is nothing that compares with Williamson County. If I look around the room, there are probably some of you who've not had to, who've been in Williamson County your whole lives. I envy you. The advantage I have is I know what it's like other places. This is something special here. The intent of the Hamlets was to preserve that special thing. In just the time we've been here, almost 20 years, the changes have been immense in Williamson County. I can remember going to Ben Gary's Auctions and there were cows across the street, and now I think there's a Taco Bell. That's not the part of Williamson County I remember. I would encourage you to leave the regulations where they are. I think Mike and his staff did a great job of listening. Mike runs a great meeting, gets to the point, gets it over, and we get to leave. I compliment him on that. I disagree with his findings and would respectfully ask that you all keep Williamson County, the rural integrity of Williamson County as much as we can. It's going in a hurry. I would ask you to leave that 5,000-square-foot maximum for commercial buildings intact. Thank you for your kind attention.
Hi. My name's Wayne Jones. I live at 6407 Patensville Arnold Road. Actually, College Grove is the township. I live at the base of 840 as it crosses to Patensville. When 840 first came in, I don't think a lot of you, possibly some, came to the meetings and told us that this was going to be put in to alleviate traffic for Nashville and to give opportunity and economic development to the area. At that time, a lot of us in that area did not want it because it's coming straight through, and when we talked about the decibel levels of the noise, we were told there was nothing to be done about it. There were no sound walls going to go in or anything else, but we were going to get the interstate. And it came. Now, we sit there and we go out in our backyard or our front yard and we hear semi, and semi, and semi, and semi. People come to my beautiful hill, and I moved to Williamson County for the same reason he did. Beautiful. It's Williamson County. God's acres. But they come to my property and as soon as they go back outside, they say, "Man, what is all that noise?" Well, it's that interstate. Okay, I understand. I went to the meetings, and Leapers Fork is a beautiful place, and the way they like their little stores, their little buildings, I think that's perfect for them. I have no problem with that at all. I think each one of these Hamlets is individual, and if I take any issue with the study that's been done, is that probably not each Hamlet area has been researched the way it should be. Ours is not a Hamlet anymore. If you come to Patensville Road, you aren't going to see houses going up because of the noise. And to tell us that we could not then develop our property commercially, which is the only avenue that we have at this point in time through there, I don't understand. I have 10 acres. I've been out there 35 years. When I first moved out there, I was in the insurance business and thought that I would sooner or later put an insurance agency down on that corner. I've had plans drawn up at different times for different buildings to go up there. I have always thought that I would develop that corner. I still would like to, you know. I still economically, I'm not feasible, so it's still in the future somewhere. But why limit me? When I can't sell my house residentially, why would you limit me from selling it commercially to someone that comes in? And I appreciate what you did. 5,000 square feet was not adequate at all to sit there and do the studies that you did and come up with the tiered plan. I really appreciate that. But I still don't see anything wrong with the way it was before when I was zoned crossroads center, and whatever I decided I wanted to do, I could go to you as a zoning board, present my case, you tell me what, we can work together, and we come up with a plan. I want it to stay exactly like it is, or I would like, at least for the Patensville area, to be looked at because it's not your common Hamlet like the rest of them are. We have an interstate going straight through the middle. We have businesses on one side, businesses on the other, and when I talk to my neighbors, "Hold on a minute, truck's going by." It's my opinion. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Diane Jones. I'm Wayne's wife. We live at 6407 Patensville Arnold Road, College Grove, Tennessee. If you're not familiar with the area, we're right there on the crossroads. On one corner, we're at the corner property. On one corner, it's Franklin. On one corner, it's Thompson Station. On our corner, it's College Grove, simply because 35 years ago when we moved out there, College Grove said, we couldn't get anyone to deliver our mail, and College Grove said, "We'll take them, but they're the last people we'll take." So we've been out there for 35 years. As Wayne said, a lot has changed. A lot has changed in Williamson County. I remember, I've lived in Nashville all my life, but lived in Williamson County for 35 years. When the interstate did come through, we didn't have a voice in it. I can appreciate everybody saying we want to keep things rural, but that was taken away from us. That was taken away from our ability to do things with our property. Like my husband said, we were zoned crossroads centers, then all of a sudden, the Planning Commission changed. Now it's, there was talk of the Hamlets, and it was voted and approved, although we went to many meetings and voiced our opinions against it. There are also people that were at these last hearings that voted just like we did. Like you said, there was 35 percent one way and 33 percent the other. The 35 was, I think, the 5,000, but I think that the larger number, and I could be wrong, was for a much greater, even greater than 15,000 square feet. So it seems like the Planning Commission is trying to meet in the middle somewhere to appease everyone. All I'm saying is, don't take our rights away from us to get what we need out of our property. Don't take away that, that chance for us to have what we want just so everybody else can keep everything rural, because if your land is, is right near the interstate, you're never, ever going to be considered rural anymore. So I just hope that you continue with these meetings and work with us, and just to say to you, we can no longer keep things as they were before because things change. And you have to allow everybody the opportunity to look at each property individually and not classify everybody in one big bucket because we're not that way anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Greg Langley. I live at 915 Battlefield Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. Want to thank you guys for all the things you do. I think I realize how difficult they are and how often you guys end up in the middle trying to be squeezed from both sides. The, there are a couple of things I want to say. One, you know, I came here quite a few years ago in southwest Williamson County, which is a really cool place now. In my opinion, it was much cooler then. It had mobile homes, and it had real farmers, and it had tons of things that really gave it a lot of rural solid character, right? That's pretty much gone. Now, whether it's gone for the better, whether an 8,000, 10,000-square-foot house makes that better, I don't know. All I know is that the whole concept of an agri sticker road, 840 through somewhere, not, you know, some of these areas, that's a bigger impact than any 10,000-square-foot lot or building or whatever. What I would urge you to do is think about, if possible, check with council, doing some design review stuff, because a 10,000-foot building or a 5,000-foot building on one lot might be fine, or it might stick out like a sore thumb. On another lot, given the topography, a 15,000-square-foot building might have a similar impact. There's no way that this one-size-fits-all thing, given the topography particularly in this part of Tennessee. I think that the balance you guys have struck or have talked about is reasonable, makes a lot of sense to me, and I appreciate your efforts and your work in doing it, and thank you.
They say it's Thompson Station, but I still believe it's Bethesda. But my wife and I, Jay, longtime residents of Williamson County, and it's, I feel sorry for the couple that got 840. We were blessed, it was supposed, most southern route was supposed to go right over our house, and it didn't. It went over there. But we own the parcel, or she owns the parcel of land adjacent to the church, all around the church. I think it's 200 acres, isn't it? Richard King, his wife, own the opposite corner, large parcel land. Rest of the land's on the corner of small lots. Nobody's approached us, you know, about a survey or anything, asking us any questions about the Hamlet. Hadn't heard a word other than what meetings we've been to, but I can't see why the way it is now is not working. You know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. But my, my biggest complaint is nobody's come to us and talked to us about this. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate the opportunity very much of letting the public and those especially who are affected by it to speak and to express their opinions. Undoubtedly, you have done your best to listen, and I can sympathize truly with you all trying to really reach a settlement or whatever law you're trying to really pass that will please so many different people of, I don't see how it could be really and truly done satisfactorily by everyone. And so I will say to you, you have worked hard, and I appreciate that very much. I am, my name is Charles Moore. I live in Brentwood, 5106 Pheasant Run Trail, Brentwood. Lived there over 20-some years now, and I own property in Williamson County. We own a farm right on Carter Creek Pike in Williamson County where 840 split that farm which we really had bought to truly build a quiet house there, but that 840 went straight in the middle, and I can assure you that it's going to be very difficult for us to live there quietly like we had expected before the Route 840 went through. And furthermore, there are two ramps on Carter Creek Pike that really are located on our Traffic and noise would be truly horrendous. We were thinking of building anywhere along that, maybe that portion, but assure you, we cannot. we cannot. It's been zoned already. It had been zoned, that area. Triple C, 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 C. About thirty-five acres approximately already zoned, and there had been commercial activities on that property where the ramps go by it. My question tonight, if I may, if had been zoned already for thirty, forty years, there had been gas station and store on that property, will the new law grandfather that particular I would hope that the zoning that was there would be really respected and maintained for us, because we cannot build on it any longer. It has to be used for commercial purposes, and it had been, and I hope you will allow us to continue that zoning. I don't know if any provisions have been made to respect and to maintain the older current zoning there. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is David Taylor, and I own property at sixty-four thirty-nine Meeks Road. And I'm here tonight to talk about the recommendation for the hamlet zoning. Although, I'm very happy that the county has listened to the people that own CC property, and they've listened to what they say. I, I still have opposition with the, with the amount of square footage that, that they want to allow. It's still far less than what it was before. I'm happy that, at least, it's come up somewhat, but I'm not so sure that that's still fair to the, to the taxpayers of the county that own that property, when they're having such a huge reduction in, in the land that they had before. I think somewhat of the problem is, is that, is that we've taken the CC zoning district, and we've divided it into two, into a hamlet and a village. Now, with that being done like that, within the hamlet, the only way to, in the future, if, if that area grows to a size that outgrows the hamlet and has to go to a village, then there would have to be things like special area plans and studies and, and that would, I think, would encumber development within that area. Previous to that, there was no special area plan or anything that, that people that owned that property would have to go through. So although, once again, I'm happy that they've made some changes, I'm wondering if there's still not something else that they could do to, to make it easier for the people that own that property? Is there any way of possibly eliminating the hamlet? Is there a way of keeping everybody that was CC before in the same zoning district? So whatever rights a person in a village would have, a person in a hamlet would have, and I think that people have spoke before me to say it, one size sort of doesn't fit all. What might be good in Leapers Fork might not be good in Rutterville, might not be good in, in Triune. So if there's any other ideas that, that possibly we could come up with to, to find middle ground for everybody, I'd appreciate if we could look at that. Thank you very much for all your time and your effort.
Good evening. My name is Alan Pateet. I'm from the hamlet, I guess, of Burrwood, Carter's Creek Pike. I don't know if it's a hamlet, or I don't have any pigs, so I don't know what I can consider myself as a farmer. But I live at fifty-three fifty-one with my wife, Carter's Creek Pike. We, her parents own property, about seventy-five acres, give or take, whoever surveyed it at the time. Ran it Carter's Creek Pike and Johnson Hollow Road. The impact of when me and my wife came out, we, we married, and we cut off three acres that was a hog lot and built our little modest house, thinking that we were going to be there till the rest of our lives, and, you know, this was the place, and things were going to kind of maybe change a little bit, but not change a lot. Then, I eight forty, or, excuse me, State Route eight forty came through. Changed everything we ever thought about. We, at first, talked to the state, listened to the state. We thought the state listened to us, but we couldn't stop it. It came through. Now, when I go out on my deck, I see the hillside cutaway where Mr. Moore owns. I see the interstates coming through. It's going to be a wonderful thing. All fifty-five thousand cars coming on it every day, according to the Tennesseans Report. It's going to drastically change our community, one way or the other. We think there's going to be a lot of noise. We don't know how to address it. We hear our good friends say they can't even talk to their neighbor because of so much noise. We can't change that. We'd like to have changed it, because essentially, the State Route eight forty changed everything me and my wife had planned for with the family. Tore up our family. Her sister and her own part of the property, and now this is still going to be impacted upon it. I've heard that what the committee has come before, as far as putting a cap on it. Ten years ago, I'd say, "Keep Burrwood the same." Now, I say, "Why throttle it? Why not give the homeowners, the property owners, an opportunity to be able to reap some benefits, of which there hasn't been very many out our way?" We're in the middle of where Dixon's going to be, and we do have the off-ramps. Make use of them. I have concerns with the off-ramps, with the people coming off. We've still got the little narrow Carter's Creek Pike. You know, we see the changes now. We come out on our driveway, we can't hardly pull out on the road, because a line starts coming out of Murray County, and it's like a parade going by. And literally, every morning, we take a risk to get out on the road. Now, that's not what you're here to, to talk about. But I would recommend, you know, if you look at a cap, look at the, the community itself, do some more study. I don't think what you're saying, anything's locked in, but I certainly, for the long haul, wouldn't throttle anything back. Growth is going to demand growth, and the community is going to change, as a matter of how you guys can control it and go forward with it for the future. But it needs to be an all-encompassing study to kind of see what you have now and what it would mean for the future, and for the future of the property owners. We love Burrwood, no doubt about it. My wife's a Huff, she's from Burrwood. The store out there is Ken Huff's. He is the only commercial building I know that's been out there since nineteen forties, other than the churches. And I don't know that you could count them as commercial. You go to our little church, and our poor little church says, "We can't hardly wait for it to open up. People are going to come off that ramp, and they're going to come on to your church, and it's going to grow." Just look out. We don't know. Nobody has that crystal ball to see what's happened. But I would encourage you, just take another look at, you know, what the community is, what the community could be. Look at, you know, at Coos Springs, I've seen that. I wish they had a million dollars to time that I bought a piece of property that was for sale, that now could have turned it around and made fifty or seventy-five million on it. I didn't, I don't. Again, just the thing I would encourage each of you to do is consider, you know, what you're trying to do to put a throttle on it, and maybe more conservative or, or aspects of throttling it down, you know, give some caveats to what happens if somebody comes in. If a Mars dog food company comes through and wants to build a three hundred square foot building, would you stop that? I don't know. You guys have to answer that. But I'd encourage you to take a good, close look at it and see what the impact would, would have on the Burrwood community. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing us to come here.
Thank you tonight for allowing me to come up here and speak to y'all. We live at forty-eight nineteen Highway ninety-six, out in the middle of Arrington, Tennessee. And we've been out there for a long time. We have Peachtree Farms out there. We see a lot of people, a lot of people come out and visit us. And people keep asking, "When are we going to have a store out here where we can go buy groceries? When are we going to have nice restaurants out here where we can go to?" I think things should be done appropriately. We're zoned to CC, the crossroads. And, but we've had a lot of people, a lot of people in the neighborhood. We have, on Highway ninety-six, it's a built eight forty coming off Triune, over thirty thousand cars a day coming down that road. It's not going to stop. It's going to keep growing. Kicks Brooks, Arrington Vineyard, it's a beautiful, nice place. It's bringing another hundred twenty-five thousand people down that road, and buses coming over to his vineyard. They need places to go. Need nice restaurants. They need hotels. The whole historic in Arrington, there's really not nothing historic in Arrington. My wife's been out there fifty-two years, and I came from a small rural area, Giles County, Plaskett, Tennessee. Born on cattle farm. So I like the, I like the country. But as it is, as most of the gentlemen here has expressed, you can't stop growth. It's going to grow. We would hope that you would consider the size. We have forty-two acres of increasing it. We'd like to see us stay the CC. But if you can't consider allowing a little bit, a little larger area to have out there, so they can have things out there, something nice. We've had people come by wanting to put, you name it, out there, storage places, and what are we? We've turned them down, we wouldn't even talk to them. But we've had, had some real nice people, the public. They're real nice folks, and they come out and talk to us. They want to build a nice shopping center down there. They build first-rate stores. They want to build a shopping center and have nice restaurants, a place where people can have a pizza, go in a nice restaurant and sit down. And they do a nice job, as I say. And we would hope that, that you would consider increasing that size some, so we could have some nice things. I don't want a Walmart out there, or Target. But I would like to have a shopping center out there with some glass, a place where people could come and shop for food. You consider the population within a ten-mile radius of us, we've got more people in our area than secondary Coos Springs, so there's a lot of people out there. And Mr. Powell, a lot of the street, his subdivision chapel up there, a lot of folks are moving in there, nice places. But they all come, a lot of them come to our farm, and they all ask, "When are they going to put a nice store out here? When are we going to have restaurants?" And nobody has talked to me about a hamlet until we came to some of the meetings. That's the first I've ever heard of it. And so I would like to appreciate the opportunity to address y'all and hope you that you will consider increasing that size a little more. Eventually, it's going to come that way. And like I say, the, the only thing that's historic is the yellow building across the street, and when they widen that road, it's going to be gone. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Your name, sir?
Paul Grammer.
I'm sorry?
Paul Grammer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
If you'll do it real short, we'll give you a second bit. Yes, sir. I thought I was the only, or the main one, affected by the eight forty, adversely affected by the eight forty. But from what I heard tonight, you know, there are a lot of people just as affected by it, and I can tell you, all those who are immediately by the eight forty or around it are paying the price, really, for this noise and what have you, for the, truly, the good of everybody else, that interstate, or rather, Route eight forty. It helps the state, it helps the people, the community at large, and everybody else benefits from it. But please do not penalize the people who have suffered more and will be suffering more as a result of the eighty-four, of the eight forty going through.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Wayne J. Dubersing, and I live over there on eighty-six fifty Talafaro Road. I have a piece of property that's actually off of Cox Road, that I think actually falls into this. My home property probably doesn't, but I have had, I've lived in Williamson County now for about, I don't know, twenty-six-plus years. I'm a little nervous right now, because, you know, you guys are great. I mean, this is a pretty nice little gathering here. I've never spoken in front of people. You put me in front of a Sunday School class or something like that, I can do really good, but, but, you know, all the, well, this sort of looks like one, but it's not exactly what I'm used to.
Go ahead, you're doing good.
When I first moved over there on my five acres, there were actually, before I moved there, there were two mobile homes, and they were double wides. And so I purchased the property hoping that I could put, you know, I had a small mobile home, and they let me replace one of them, and I was hoping I could do the same thing on the other side. But I found out that the codes and stuff had changed, and I was not able ever to use that other side. It's got a septic tank and had a telephone pole with electricity and everything else, but it sat there dormant, and I was kind of hoping I would be able to subsidize my piece of property with that other side, and was not able to, because codes wouldn't allow me to. But, okay, I did eventually build a home out there, and mobile home and all that stuff is, is done away with. But when you start talking about rules and regulations and, and everything else, I think people have to take a perspective of how and what happens. Just, just a little while back in Nashville, they were trying to outlaw chickens, okay? And a lot of people have no idea why you would outlaw chickens in Nashville. But in all these little rural communities, there used to be chicken farmers that had, you know, dozens or hundreds or whatever it was of chickens. Now, today in America, you have like four major conglomerates that control like ninety-six percent of the chickens, okay? And the reason that you do that is so that you can get the taxes off of the chickens or the eggs that come off of these conglomerates every time you go to Walmart or wherever it is. And it's like, you know, it was supposed to be because they were noisy, or it was supposed to be because they were dirty or whatever else. But the fact of the matter was, it was because of taxes. And I think we need to really pay attention to what's going on in our communities, you know, with all these zoning rules and regulations and stuff. I mean, there's a lot of folks that have gotten good grievances, you know? Their property had gone through within interstate or whatever, and then they can't make it commercial or whatever, or can't build on it or whatever. I just made a couple of little bitty notes on, you know, on my, on my little piece of paper right here. And I want you guys to think about something really, really hard right now, okay? See this microphone right here? It uses electricity. These buildings, they use electricity. In the United States of America, we have about three hundred and twenty-something million people. Just a few weeks ago, India got hit, and some of their grid got knocked out. Over six hundred million people lost electricity. This is what we're talking about here, planning and, and zoning and infrastructure and, and what can be done or whatever. I want you guys to know that if the electricity grid goes out in the United States, the sustainable population is less than twenty-eight million, because your gasoline won't pump to your, your cars. Well, I may be, I, I apologize.
After the issue before us, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Well, it's, like I said, as far as the zoning goes, I think that people should have a say in what they do. I worked with a fellow, and he, he was always about his neighbors, you know, mowing their grass and keeping up with codes and everything else. But his daughter got in trouble, and she got divorced, and he built a garage next to his house. This wasn't next to me, and it wasn't Williamson County, but anyway. He built a, an apartment over that garage, and she lived in it for like three or four years. And I said, "Well, was that codes or zoning or whatever?" And he go, "No." I said, "Well, how come it was right for you to do that, and your other neighbor over here..." And your other neighbor over here, you know, you didn't want them to have a mobile home. Everybody does things for themselves, and we need to look out for each other, I think, a little bit. So these, these codes and things, I'm glad you guys are having these meetings. I really am. I'm, I'm tickled to death. And I do love living in Williamson County, by the way. My kids grew up here. My, both of them went to Page. My daughter's a nurse. My son is a helicopter pilot. So I appreciate Williamson County. He's in the military. And I, I just want you to take every one of these people's opinions, you know, to heart because they've got blood and sweat and money and, and everything else in their own property. And sometimes the people that make the decisions, I mean, they've got the same thing going on, but they need to make a decision. Thank you.
One else?
Good evening. I'm Mark Stewart, 6238 Patton Road, just a short distance from the vineyard, just a short distance from A-40, where I, for several years now, have been listening to the 18-wheelers pass basically 24 hours a day, but I seem to hear them more at 3:00 in the morning. And I'm thinking, come November, December, and next summer, when it's open all the way, how many will I hear? Now, I don't really have a, a dog in this fight because my family's been there since 1810, that same piece of property. My son is planning to stay right there for the rest of his life. We don't plan to sell anything. We're growing vegetables out there. And so I don't know that I'm particularly affected. But as I've been sitting here listening, I keep thinking about, I've gone to the store and pick up something like an article of clothing, and I look at it, and it says, "One size fits all." No, it doesn't. Because it didn't fit me, or my son, or some other people that I've seen. Sometimes it would swallow them up, and sometimes it didn't button. One size does not fit all. One size does not fit most, although that comes closer maybe. I'm just asking that, take in consideration that everybody in a hamlet or a village may not be the same size, the same need, and it's not going to fit. Thank you.
My name is Jane Giles. I live at 6868 Bethesda Arno Road. Hadn't planned on getting up saying, saying anything, but saw Susan up there, and I got to thinking of Susan, and we both live in the same community. My husband and I are trying to keep our farm up. We've got 300 acres. It's a five-generation, and I wish you all would consider not changing. The hamlet is, I'm not even really that sure about it, but I wish somebody would have come and talked to us. We own one corner, and at the, at the crossroads at Bethesda, we own one corner, the Kings own one corner, and then the store and somebody else. But we own a good bunch, a good many acres there. And I wish you would think about it because I know a lot of these people want to, to build and, and all of that. But I thank God every day that I've got a farm, and I've got trees to look at, and I've got flowers to look at, and it's paid for. My daddy killed himself trying to, not killed himself, but he worked himself to death. And I work my rear end off in the hay field. I plow, I do everything, but I want this, I love the farm life. I love it. But please talk to us and tell us what's going on instead of just throwing it on us and saying, hey, you're in the hamlet now. And come to us and talk to us. But I do appreciate you listening to us. Thank you so much.
One else? Last call? Last, last call? Public hearing's closed now. Thank you. We'll open the floor for discussion. Comments? Thoughts? Anyone? Pete?
Yeah. I've had a lot of people talk to me about this hamlet and all. Some that've been here for their lifetime, want it to stay like it is. And some that moved in here in the last 15, 20 years, want it to stay like they dreamed about it being on Mayberry. We need to look at each lot in these hamlets are different. And a lot of them are not going to be any good at all for commercial development until sewer come, but we don't know when sewer comes because a lot of things come to this county a long time before we ever dreamed of it coming. But when it comes, they need to have the ability to do something with it. The last plan that the committee came up with, set on 10 acres, you can have up to 15,000 square feet, commercial structure. Now, if you have a construct, commercial structure, where are you going to put it? You're going to put it in the most visible part of it. I don't care if you've got 11.9 acres behind it, you're going to put the commercial structure right out the front. So changing it to that way doesn't help much at all as far as the way it looks in the neighborhood. I've heard, I've had other people talk to me about doing away with the hamlet idea completely and just keep the crossroads centered and work each lot as it comes. And I don't think we've come up with a solution that will satisfy everybody. But I think the people that do have the availability of doing something with a lot that has been placed in a commercial area should be able to do it and do something more than we've got down now.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Other comments? Any thoughts? Susan? I'm sorry.
Yes. I have a question first for the staff. The previous zoning with the cross, crossroads, what was the size, maximum size of building, commercial building then?
The, the, the previous zoning ordinance in the Crossroad Center District didn't establish a specific maximum building size. And so the, the, the maximum building size was really a function of the other development standards in the zoning ordinance, whether there's water, whether there's sewer, natural resource protection, those sorts of things.
As a member of the Plan Update Committee, what we discussed was a multitude of options. Our summary to that, particularly from the two basic public hearings we had most recently, was that there's pretty well an equal balance between people who wanted the smaller-scale development and people who wanted the larger-scale development. And our purpose was to do a couple of things. One was to reach a compromise that we felt was reasonable, and that sliding scale was the result of that. But the second part of that equation was to give the hamlets an opportunity as they begin to mature and they evolve, and you know what they're going to be, an opportunity to, to go into the village category. The advantage of the village category is it, and it's something we've already done in a couple of places, in College Grove and in Leapers Forks, is to create their own plan. They become, each and every property owner becomes a stakeholder in that plan. We go there, we listen to what they want their community to be, we come back, draft regulations to achieve that, go back to the community and say, okay, here's how, here's the regulations that'll get you where you want to be. So basically, under the village concept, you're controlling your own destiny. And I think that was, that, I think, was an important component of a compromise to what we had started out with. Compromise to the extent that, hey, as you mature as a hamlet, then you can change the regulations via the village category and achieve what you want to achieve. But right now, to, to go to Rutterville and say you need a giant box down there is, is premature. And it gives them the ability to get to that at some point in time, to be determined later when it, when you know what it needs to be. Right now, we don't know. And that was the concept. These are the sizes you can develop as. And Pete, there are some setback things that would constrict some of these on acreage sizes. So there's more criteria to this than just, and this is criteria that's been in place 25 years. We've been operating on it. The constrictions of sewer, the constrictions of traffic. I think all of you are aware of those. Those things still apply. That's, that hasn't changed in this. But the idea of a maximum building size and the ability at some point to become a village is the, is what ties that together. And there were three parts to it. One of them was a better definition of the character of these hamlets. I think that was an important part of it. But that's what we were trying to achieve, to give you some idea of, you know, I could, I could apologize, I guess, all day to everybody out there about A-40, but I didn't have anything to do with it, folks. I want y'all to make sure of that. Anybody else got a comment? And I don't want to leave next A-40 either, by the way. So we're, we're on equal footing there. Any thoughts?
Tommy?
Thank you, John. And I agree with that. And I sit on that same steering committee, and we, we work very hard to come up with a, what we felt was a fair compromise based on the input we received from you. Will it satisfy everybody? No. But it, we think it's fair. You know, we, one of the big things about the hamlet is, is indeed the character. And that's one of the things that we heard over and over again, and it's maintaining that rural character of, of that community. And above everything else, we try to strike a balance in maintaining that character and providing for some, you know, commercial growth that was, would fit the hamlet character. And I think, I think we've done it. Again, I know some of you are going to agree, some you're not going to agree, but you know, it was kind of all over the board. I think 30% wanted 5,000 or less, and what was it?
35?
35 wanted over 25,000. So, you know, that's where we are. You know, I think we've come up with a fair program plan, and based on that, John, I'm going to make the motion that we approve, you know, this resolution.
We have a motion. We have a second. Motion to second. Holly?
Well, I just wanted to say I've attended, you know, both meetings, whether it's Hillsborough and Page. And, you know, I'm, I'm listening to some of the comments, like there is no commercial buildings in these areas whatsoever, and that's not what the plan is. I mean, there's still the ability to build commercial buildings, to, you know, be a commercial area. So I'm just wondering if there's just some misconception, you know, in the, in the areas that, you know, that were designated as hamlets. And I'm kind of like with you, John. I mean, I don't see it as a restriction, but I see it as these property owners, they can still build, they can still do things, but they can also control, you know, whether or not they want to go into a village, you know? Instead of having a huge, big bookstore or Walmart, you know, that would be some of the larger square foot buildings. So, I mean, did I misunderstand? There's still commercial.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
You know, one of the interesting things, and I, I failed to mention this earlier. I'll do it now. We had the, we had an exercise where they fill out paperwork as to the sizes and what they want it to be. And you'd have a lot of people saying they wanted greater than 25,000 feet. And at the same time, the kind of 25,000-foot, square foot development was a mom-and-pop grocery store. Well, they're not 25,000 square feet, or a mom-and-pop restaurant, or a, not a 7-Eleven. I don't know what you call it in the country, that's a grocery store, the gas stop place, you know? A lot of those kinds of facilities, but they're basically on the smaller side of the scale. So, you know, you have to balance this by what people think and what they visualize as terms of, 25,000 is a pretty good-sized building, or 15,000 is a good-sized building. So that's where we are. Pete?
Yes, let me ask you a question.
It's thought of.
Go ahead.
Several of these people that spoke had large tracts of land. We're talking about the size of the building. What about a commercial development with multiple smaller-sized buildings? How would this be dealt with if sewer structure and things were available?
Well, let me, there's two parts to the answer to that.
Well, that's why I answer these, these people as well.
All right. The, the first thing is, there's a lot of misconception about what is, in fact, CC. What was the largest tract, Katie? Was it 13 acres?
19.
19. Most of the CC tracts generally are very, very small. Could you give me some percentages? Do you have that available? Just about three categories of sizes so that you can understand, most of them are smaller tracts. A lot of people think they got 200 acres in CC. There's no such thing.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. There's, 19's the biggest one, and there's a 12 and a 13, I think, and some others.
Most fall between 1 and 10 acres. Excuse me.
Again?
Most would fall between 1 and 10 acres.
Okay. Of vacant parcels now. This is not the developed, already-developed pieces that are residential or whatever they are right now. But they're mostly smaller tracts, so that's part of the equation here. There are some larger tracts, admittedly. And the second part of your question, I'm sorry, I lost it.
Can there be commercial development on these? Does this outlaw commercial developments on, some people had 35, 40 acres they thought?
No. No. Pete, the biggest thing you've got to deal with, and you said it earlier, you know what the problem is. They got to get sewer.
They can still go through if the infrastructures there are available. They can still have the right to go through and develop them as a thing, they just can't have one building.
Humongous.
Humongous. That's, that's, that's what I wanted to make clear.
All right. Anything else? We've got a motion in a second on the floor. Anything else?
Nothing? Prepare to vote? Go now. Paul, do you lock it up? You on my gavel? You got it. Thank you. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's take about a five-minute recess, please. Church revised on 10.68 acres located at 1288 Lewisburg Pike in the second voting district. Staff?
The applicant is requesting approval of an 8,145 square foot building for the use as the church's worship and sanctuary. Pursuant to Division 4400E of the Williamson County Zoning Ordinance, this use must be reviewed by this body at a public meeting. The property in question is located on Lewisburg Pike, approximately a quarter mile south of Henpeck Lane's intersection. Site is bordered by residential uses to the north, south, and west, and non-residential uses are to the north and east. Access is taken from Lewisburg Pike by an existing driveway, which will be widened to allow for two-way traffic to enter and exit the site. Approval from the Tennessee Department of Transportation will be required for the drive connection. Water to the site is served by HB and TS Utility District, and staff has received confirmation that service is available. Site will be served by an onsite septic system, and at the time of this writing, the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management is still reviewing the request. Approval is expected by meeting date. As the property is located within the city of Franklin's urban growth boundary, a copy of the site plan has been submitted for their review. At the time of this writing, no response from the city has been received. Bulk and performance standards have been met. A landscaping plan has been submitted and approved by staff. Site plan is in order and pending approval of the septic facilities by the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management by meeting date. Staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. Number one, all signage be approved per ordinance requirements. Number two, evidence of approval for the driveway connection from T-DOT prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. Three, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number four, posting of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of $37,350. One additional item, Mr. Chairman, the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved this request.
Questions of staff?
Just a move of approval with recommendations from staff.
What's made in second? Any further discussion? Prepare to vote?
Prepare to vote? Record the vote? Motion carries, thank you. Item 16, preliminary plant review for the Grove, AKA Laurel Cove, Phase 1 revised, containing 112 lots on 526 acres located off Arnold Road in the 3rd Voting District. Staff?
A revised site plan for this development was approved at the March 2012 meeting. A revised preliminary plat for, for this phase was also approved at that same meeting. The applicant is now requesting approval of another revised preliminary plat for Phase 1 of the development in order to incorporate an additional segment of Wildings Boulevard, approximately 850 feet, including a bridge spanning McCrory Creek into the bounds of this plat. Aside from this change, the proposed preliminary plat is identical in layout to that previously approved. This plat is in order and staff recommends approval of this revised preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed. One, prior to the final plat submittal that includes the 201st lot within the development, the improvements to Udalee Covington Road, including the right turn lane at the site entrance, as well as off-site improvements as stipulated in the traffic study review findings provided by the county's traffic consultant and incorporated into the stipulations of approval for the site plan governing this development must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Two, prior to the final plat submittal that opens the Arnold College Grove site entrance, the improvements to Arnold, Arnold College Grove Road, including the left and right turn lanes at the site entrance must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Three, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Such would include off-site improvements as stipulated in the traffic study review findings provided by the county's traffic consultant and incorporated into the stipulations of approval for the site plan governing this development. Four, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Milcroft and Utility District. Five, establishment of any applicable bonds for the, for the sewer treatment, disposal, and collection system. Six, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of appropriate performance bonds for landscaping. Seven, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And eight, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? I hear an unprepared to vote? Pound on it, Paul. Thank you. Record the vote? Motion carries, thank you. Item 17 on final plat, final plat review for Estates of Gallant Ridge, containing 10 lots on 12.73 acres located off South Carruthers Road in the 4th Voting District. Staff?
The sketch plan for this development was reviewed at the January 2012 meeting and the preliminary plat for this development was approved at the March 8, 2012 meeting. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval of the development, which contains 10 lots. Final plat is consistent in layout with the approved preliminary plat. The plat is in order and staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. Number one, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $220,000 for roads, drainage, and erosion, erosion control. Two, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $88,500 for water improvements as specified by Milcroft and Utility District. Number three, the posting of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of $7,000. Number four, submission of the HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney for planning and environment. The approved HOA documents must be recorded at the same time as the recording of the final plat. Number five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number six, the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on record, recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? I hear an unprepared to vote? Record the vote? Motion carries, thank you. Item 18, final plat review for Laurel Brook, Section 8, reapproval, containing 8 lots on 40.11 acres located off Sneed Road in the 8th Voting District. Staff?
The applicant is requesting reapproval of a revised final plat for Section 8 of the Laurel Brook subdivision in order to exchange acreage between Lot 8105 and the open space within the section. These changes do not affect the configuration or boundaries of other sections within the development. As you may recall, this was previously approved during the June 2012 meeting, but the approval expired when the plat was not recorded within 30 days of the Planning Commission's approval. These changes do not result in a net loss in open space. As a result, staff views these changes as minor in nature. All owners of lots within the section and the representative of the homeowners association have signed the plat and approval is recommended.
Chair, move for approval with staff.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now. Record the vote? That's the first time that thing has gotten everybody on it tonight. Thank you. Item 19 was on consent. Item 20 is approval of Planning Commission meeting schedule for 2013. Who's got that, Mike?
I can do it, Mr. Chairman. Just real quickly, this is what you do every year. Approve the schedule for next year. You've got that in front of you and it was in your packet. Staff recommends approval of this schedule.
Motion? Motion made in second, prepare to vote? Record the vote? Motion carries, thank you. Item 21 is on, it was added, it was in Chardonnay, which is a street name change. Who's got that, Mike?
I can do this, too.
Okay.
Uh, this is a, a pretty minor issue. You all are familiar with the Chardonnay development on Clovercroft Road just east of its intersection with Wilson Pike. You all recently approved a final plat for one of the sections within the development. After that plat was approved, the county's EMS folks asked them to change a road name. They had a belief it was a Rombauer Drive and also a Rombauer Court. I think they felt like that, those were too close together and asked them to change that. So they're, they're proposing keeping Rombauer Drive and then having Cakebread Court, which I understand is the name of a wine, for the court. Yeah.
PJ's the only one that knows.
As you're nodding.
It's her emotion, that's what I'm concerned about. Motion made in second, thank you. It's not that late, guys, girls. We have a motion in a second, prepare to vote? Vote now. Record the vote? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Pete. Any other business? No business? We are adjourned, thank you.